We'll have to check the recorder's not going on.
Yeah, there was a problem. The camera's not working.
Mayor Kim Dora?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Caprio?
Mr. Padilla.
Councilor Doody?
Here.
Councilor Esposito?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Pucci? Councilor Wentworth?
Here.
I have a motion to approve the June 5, 2012 minutes of special town council meeting, 6:15 PM. By Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Esposito. Roll call.
This was the first one.
Mayor Kim Dora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Doody?
Stay now, it's June 5.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item B, a motion to approve the June 5, 2012 minutes of the regular water pollution control authority and town council agenda.
I have several corrections on the minutes. First, under item number one, my name is omitted from attendance. And then, on page seven, the things that are missing when we went into executive session, the motion to go into executive session was made by Councilor Esposito, seconded by myself, and the vote was eight-nothing. And then, when we came out of executive session, there was a motion to set the special meeting for Monday, June 11 at 7:00 PM, made by myself and seconded by Councilor Esposito, and the motion passed eight-nothing on that. And then, under number 15 adjournment, it was made, the motion to adjourn was made by myself and seconded by Councilor Esposito, and it was passed eight-nothing.
Thank you. So, the motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Kim Dora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Doody?
Stay.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
C, June 11, 2012 minutes, special town council meeting, 6:00 PM.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Kim Dora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Doody?
Stay.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Regular town council agenda. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. A, permanent project building committee.
The permanent project building committee met on Thursday, June 7, in regards to the Stanley T. Williams conversion. That was passed by the building committee to move forward. So, the architect took the redesign. There was a little, there was a few changes that Park &amp; Rec had requested, and he will finalize the reports and get everything set to go out to bid on that.
Thank you, Rose. Item B, pension committee.
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting.
Item C, finance subcommittee.
I wasn't there.
Finance subcommittee met last week, and a few things that we went up. First, Bob Hall and Carol Davidson from the library board came, and there's some information in our PAC under information sharing. They're basically came before us to kind of prep us for future budgets and the status of the trust fund for the libraries and the money situation and funding from the town. And there were a number of bid openings that were happening later last week. The Wall Field, the Switek property, Trades, Cedar Lake, and 64 Crossfield Road, the house demolition. And then, there will also be, there's some appropriations into tonight's agenda later on in the meeting, transfers. And that was, and then also there was information that was given out to us in regards to the last council meeting where the police chief was here and talked about the training account and how the budget cut would affect them because we had cut money out of it. And Anthony Esposito had given us information on the history for the last four years in the budget. That account was traditionally under budget anywhere from $7,000, $7,000 to $9,000. So, the budget cut shouldn't really affect them in this year's budget. That's it.
Thank you. Item D, hazardous waste and recycling committee.
There was no order.
E, economic development commission.
The economic development committee was recorded at the last meeting, the June 5 meeting. It's in the June 5 minutes, and we haven't met since then.
Thank you. Item F, emergency communications subcommittee.
Item M.
And G, potato corn festival. I think that's something we're gonna have to discuss. I got an email from, so we may have to bring them in for a meeting. I think they need some guidance and some help. So, we'll get them on next agenda. Item four, town manager's report. Kurt, maybe you want to talk about the DOT a little bit that we've been met with?
Yeah, I'm gonna cover on that and then just resolve some of the bids that are put in the PAC as well. DOT, we met last week with Representative Kim Dora, Mary Anthony Kim Dora, Public Book Secretary, and myself, Representative DOT, regarding some of the issues in terms of landscaping, climbing, and the like. DOT was actually very receptive. They have more planting, landscaping in this plan than they do in most any other, you know, cemetery plan. The big thing is during the process, the wall had to come down, a lot of grading that would go on. It's a long-duration project, basically two construction seasons. In the end, there was a lot of landscaping going back. They are working with the church to accommodate what they consume. The town has, you know, up the additional determined. They overall have been very, very receptive. A little bit of a few other minor issues along the way. We may be able to talk about things by the cemetery, the condition of act. They seem to be receptive towards that. There's a few issues we have to look into to make sure that if some stuff is done there properly, everybody's blessed. But again, overall, I think DOT has been very, very willing to work with everybody.
Do they want to cut back anymore at the town home where the cemetery is?
Well, the existing cemetery, there's a little giant cemetery. The stone wall comes out, and they're putting in an ornamental, basically like a wall iron.
But are they gonna, they're gonna cut back it off on it?
No, they won't. They'll go back. They're very limited by the.
Because that whole piece belongs to the church, you know, the whole piece of property here belongs to the church.
That's correct. They have that mark in terms of what's DOT right away, what is the, the church's property.
You're talking the other church. Are they gonna put back cherry trees? Because all the people are asking about their cherry trees. They're really upset about the cherry trees.
Yeah, and they're in there for replacement.
They actually, not to, but they actually have a lot of variety of landscaping, and there are a variety of trees. And Franny and Kurt had a good idea. Hopefully, they're gonna listen. They're replacing the wall up at the other corner where the cemetery is, on 22, and possibly matching the other fence that's kind of falling down, a rod running fence, and matching that wall.
On the extension?
Yeah, correct. So, hopefully, you know, the DOT may look at that and.
Yeah, we have to look at some of the issues to make sure that, you know, it works everybody. But then, again, they were willing to look at that from a cost perspective that somebody could probably do it. The good thing is that product came in way under what DOT had budgeted. It usually makes, it'll add more flexibility.
Great. Thank you.
And the other thing, just a couple items, projects, 64 Crossfield Road, which we have a DEP grant for actually demolition and acquisition of property. There's been before the week at town council a number of times. In the end, there was an agreement prepared between the property owner and the town, a purchase and sale agreement. One of the big things is to make sure that everything fit within the budget that we have the grant for from DEP. One of the big items in there was the demolition contract. That came in significantly under what was in the budget for it. The budget's about $25,000. It's about half of that, or $13,000 for demolition. So, what's left to happen is basically take care of the sales agreement. It has to get worked out between the town attorney's office if everything's within budget, which it is. So, we can continue to move forward towards the acquisition. Basically, once we acquire the property, then we can go through demolition of the property. That property will be open space in perpetuity.
Does that the house that we're letting, owing to?
Always have a property.
Is this gonna take care of that?
The house will be gone. So, it'll become open space and.
That has been hanging around a long time.
Yeah, it's one of the properties that is probably the most loved home property in town. It's nice to be able to get that grant.
Don't go along that property after us.
It'll go to the town. We have the opportunity perhaps, and we have, we can only look at the land, you know, some similar organization, like the Land Trust, if the town was receptive to that.
Thank you.
Okay. And the other bid, Sierra Lake Road, water service connection, that's part of the DEP grant for handling water supply and the number of properties of Sierra Lake Road. Those bids, we have a number of bids, and they range from around $41,000 to $80-something thousand. The low one is within budget. So, you just have to get a few clearances from DEP. There's one issue out there. There's one property that isn't in their orders, but it's really the last property on Sierra Lake Road that we'd like to see if DEP would include in the project. We included that in, we got the numbers for the bid, so we can present that to DEP, who have a real number. So, we'll try to move that forward. And the last one, Switek, Wall Field and Switek Park. We opened those bids Friday afternoon. They range, well, for a base, there's a base bid that had all of this. The total cost ranks about $900,000, a little over that. Time up's about $1.2 million overall. Good bids. The low, the parent low bidder, we've worked with him in the past. They've got a project for us, and they've done a similar project. The initial look is, they probably would be the lowest qualified bidder. Our consultant has often just checked me out on the record and has been doing a recommendation to us. Everything looks good. If we get that, that's further on the agenda. We can talk to the details of it.
Thank you, Kurt. Community events and presentations. Citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence.
Dr. Mark Walden Lane, CNN Richard is being removed or whatever. I have a question. What's gonna happen with the senior tax rates? I talked to some of the people on that committee, and they would like to see if we could get it frozen now with the taxes down a little bit, rather than after it goes up more than two or three years or whatever. So, would we be, I've been trying to get a meeting, and I wasn't aware that Richard was gone. So, no meeting ever came, it came above. Will that be with you now, or with somebody else?
We did meet once, remember? I was there.
Oh, yeah, you were there. We gotta do it again, because this is getting, it's getting left, and it gets out of mind. So, because he's leaving, I'm sort of bringing it up to mind again that everybody's looking to do that.
All right. We'll see what we can put together. And the other statements. Item seven, resignations and appointments. Unfinished business, discussion and action regarding item A, charter revision, draft report. I want to thank everyone in the charter revision committee. I found it to be a really, really good committee. Lisa did a wonderful job guiding, helping, and Penny, and everyone on that committee. In your package, you'll see the draft report with the recommendations by the charter revision committee. I'll just take a moment to review. Penny or Lisa event comments, feel free.
I have a comment. Just have a comment on the, on the town manager portion. One of the ambiguities in the provision of the town manager is that he or she would have to move into town during his or her term. And I understand that the charter revision is now essentially making that a discretionary call or something that may be waived by the town council. But I would still like to see that language be better defined, because the rule is still going to be that the person move into town unless the council chooses to waive it in a particular circumstance. I still don't know. I mean, I've given my opinion as to what it, what I would interpret move in to town during the term or reside in the town. I basically include that it's any time right up to the day before the person leaves, or the day before the term ends. So, I think this would be a good time to put something in there, even if it may be accepted out by actual council. So, whether it be within six months, within a year, within two years, because the, the provision as it stands right now makes it impossible to know when the matter, when the, when the town manager is breaching at this, or when the town council is being insistent upon a term that's particularly open-ended. Sounds, that's something I noticed. Everything else I thought was really.
We had, we had a lengthy discussion in regards to that language, and I believe we were, or tried to change that to be more solid as far as either a time limit or.
Why couldn't you put in that he has to live in town within three months, or four months, or five months, unless the town, because right now, I agree with John on this one, the town council, I mean, look at the last one. You know, it's like, when are we breaking the law? And, you know, or when are we going against the charter if we don't have a said date? When either, then the council would have to take action before that date to say, okay, you don't have to live in town. So.
Six months is fair.
But I'd love to hear from Penny.
My name is Penny Seaman. I live on Seehole Road. Our thought was that we changed the presumption on this, so that the last time I know there was an option that the town council could take a vote. But here we say that the town manager doesn't have to live in the town at the time of the appointment, but must live in town while in office. So, I think that language means within the time that he starts his, his position, except if the town council opts out of that. I think if you say a three-month or a six-month limitation on how long he does not need to live in town, in a way, you're taking away some of the bargaining power from the town council. So, I think, unless John disagrees with me, that if the town council requires an affirmative vote for him not to live in town at the time he takes office and starts work, I think any more qualifiers in that paragraph would take away the flexibility that the town council might need to have when they negotiate with someone. It's the while in office language that I think takes care of the concern about whether one day would be enough, or a year would be enough of living in town.
The only problem with that is with the real estate market, the way it is, it leaves someone in a really bad position if you don't give them a little time to try and get things done.
This was a provision that engendered a lot of discussion at our meetings, and I think it would be fair to say that there's a, one, one point of view is that it's beneficial to the town to have the town manager live in town.
Well, I agree with that.
Another view, though, would be that the town restricts its ability to attract qualified candidates if there is an automatic requirement that you move in town, particularly in these times of difficult residential property values. And so, the town council might decide to give him six months, or her six months to move in, and if he or she can't sell her house, give another six months. But if you put something in here, that would deprive the council of flexibility to deal with particular candidates, particularly if there's a very strong candidate that you want to attract.
You only, I think the idea is that we're going for is the same, but the way I read this sentence, there isn't one statement in there that says that he needs to reside in town. It says, "The town manager need not be a resident of the town or state at the time of appointment, but may reside outside the town north Grandford, comma, while in office, comma, only with the position, with the permission of the majority of the town council."
So, so you're saying that, I mean, wouldn't it, wouldn't you want to have one statement in there that basically sets the standard that the, that the preference or the expectation is that the town manager reside? However, all of this then could apply? I just don't see a positive statement that, that he reside. It says, you know, you may imply that by saying all of that that preceded is only with the permission of the majority of the town council, but.
Maybe, maybe his concern, John's concern would be satisfied if you flipped it a little bit, if you said, "But must reside inside the town while in office unless the majority of town council gives permission for him not to do so, or her not to do so." Sorry. So, if you made an affirmative statement that way, John, would you feel more comfortable?
That's definitely better. That's definitely, and again, I'm glad I wasn't on the committee because I'd be twisting this myself. But I, I'm not sure that while in office advances the specificity of during the term. In other words, even if you, if you say, we know that he doesn't have to reside in town at the time of appointment. The current one says that. But then, the current one says, "But he must do so during the term." Here, it says while in office. So, couldn't I make the same argument that as long as, unless you say while during the entire, I mean, it's, there's gotta be, there's a period of time between his appointment, and I guess you're saying as soon as he actively becomes employed, he's gotta be in town unless it's waived by the council?
That was our intention.
That was the intention.
But I still think you don't have anything in there that says if he decides to take the position and the council doesn't waive, you don't have anything that says how many, how long it's gonna be before he has to reside in town.
But see, that's the question, Julian.
I understand that, but.
But do you want the charter to say that and take away all the flexibility? Let's say you met the best town council manager that you could ever find when you interviewed, and he said, "I will absolutely move into town as soon as I can. I own a house in Guilford, and the day I sell it, I'll move in town." But he's the best person you ever have. Would you decide not to hire him?
Well, then you would say we waive it, but I don't know whether he would or not. But maybe what we could do is, in a letter of appointment, we could say, "You must move into town by, in six or eight months," or whatever the case may be.
That gives you all the flexibility. You could put in the letter that you have, you can wait until you sell your house, but no longer than 90 days. You could put in your letter, "We'll allow you for 90 days unless we renew it for a second 90 days." So, you have, the council has all of the flexibility.
As long as it's a letter in writing that is explicit as to what the council is looking for, something to leave.
And there's a, is the number still six for that vote?
No, that would be five, just the majority.
Just the majority.
Well, understanding what our purpose here was, was not to be confronted with the situation we had under the charter as it currently exists. And that was all colored by the dissatisfaction that a number of residents and council people had with the fact that the prior town manager did not move into town. Our feeling was that this language didn't preclude the town council from directing a new town manager to move into town. In fact, what this language was intended to do was, as Penny indicated, to give the town council the ability to negotiate and say, "How long do you need to move into town?" Determine whether or not that was reasonable, and then if five out of nine agree that that person's proposal to move into town within six months, or a year, or whatever it was, was realistic, the town council had the ability to say, "Yes, we will hire you as the town manager. You shall move into town within that period of time," and end of discussion. But nothing is necessarily written in stone, as far as I'm concerned. And John, if you've got a language that you would prefer to insert in there, I don't really see much point in debating this. I think our intent is the same. So, give us what you think tightens that and makes it more enforceable, more workable, and let's go with it.
I, I understand much better now that I've heard the discussion, but I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to take a crack at it, to the council persons. I, I understand exactly what you want to do, and that's exactly what I want to do.
Good.
See if I can at least say what I think, you know what I mean?
Well, I just want to bring up, I would like to get this done as soon as possible. As you can see, there is a public hearing we could have on July 10. We could do before that, but we cannot go after that date. So, let's review this very carefully this evening, and hopefully be able to make that deadline. Does anyone have anything on the budget referendum? Because I know that was another very big issue. And the tabs on the back sheet will show the, the history of the voting and vote, and the movement to the referendum with the percentage.
So, basically, what you did is you took the percentage out. There is no percentage of voters now.
There is a percentage, but it's mandatory if they reject the budget.
Correct, but in the proposal, the, the change, there is, there is no percentage.
Correct.
Okay. It's, doesn't matter if two people vote. I'm pointing to what I read here. I'm pointing to what I read here.
John, did you have something to propose right now? I just want to say that Penny Seaman came up to me with some new wording, which I was on my, she was faster than I was, and it was, it's absolutely fine. Maybe Penny, if you want to read it.
The town manager need not be a resident, reading from the middle of the recommended changes paragraphing, "The town manager need not be a resident of the town or state at the time of appointment, but must reside within the town of North Branford by the time he or she takes office and throughout the time he or she remains in office unless the majority of the town council permits him not, he or she not to reside within the town."
Perfect. Heard.
Can I just, I want to ask a question. If the council that appoints the person, and then it goes down the road, is it, at the time of appointment, does it change, you know, as appointment letter, can it change with a change in council? I think that would be my question. I'm just going to throw that out there. I don't know if that's an issue or not, but...
That's a good question.
If there's an election and the council changes.
Every two years, the council, a new council.
Yeah, in fairness, if you appoint somebody, you're going to want to know that as well, I would think.
Yes, so in other words, you're asking whether it's one and done, whether the council makes a decision and then this manager can stay?
Right.
Or any time can the council, or the new council every two years, say, "You know what? You're moving to town," and it's only five votes to make them do that, too. So that is a good question.
We did discuss that.
I don't think that would be fair.
This is going to a vote in November, is that what this is going for? November? Do you have a date that this would take effect after it's passed, if it does get passed?
Well, within the current state statute, it would be 30 days after it's approved by the legislature.
That's what I want to know. Okay.
Kurt, that's a very good question, and we did discuss that.
I think, sorry.
Kind of leaving the guy hanging in the wing.
He knew you were here.
Yeah. I think our view is that one town council does not bind the next. And so, if this town council that appoints the town manager decides to waive the requirement of moving into the town, the next town council might change its mind. Presumably, it wouldn't tell the town manager that they had to move the next day. But I think that this provision would allow a town council to independently consider this.
That doesn't think about politics, though. I mean, you know there's going to be politics involved when there's a new council coming in. Somebody might just say, "This isn't our guy."
Penny, the way I would envision it is that a council might vote or hire a town manager and give that person six months to move into town, let's say, in effect waiving the requirement for six months. As the six months approaches, I don't see anything in this language that would prevent the town manager or the town council from raising the issue again in terms of either an extension or a notice that, you know, you have to, you're going to be leaving unless you move in within 30 days. And I agree with Penny that normally a board or commission cannot bind future boards and commissions.
Of course not.
But you would still, you would still have a ruling in effect to carry out. So if a new, if a new town council came on in the middle of that six months, I don't see that they could say, "Guess what? Tomorrow, you got to move in." I think at the end of the six months, they could, you know, prescribe what, if any, extension there might be in that.
Yeah, just that job is already, the guy's got a gun to his head from day one with that job, you know, and he doesn't need much more pressure.
I'm just throwing that out there.
You know, and again, it's probably something that's going to come out in the negotiations with the town manager. I mean, there are going to be town managers who simply have to decline the appointment unless you can give him or her greater assurance than, "Well, we can give you six months and we can talk about it in six months." So...
Right, earn a year and a half when the next election is, you might be moving or all done because you don't want to move here. And then we start to process all over again.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't change this language to, instead of a majority, say that six members of the council would have to vote on whether he lived in town or not instead of just a simple majority. Only because, having served here so long, we all know that you can get five votes pretty easy, but if you get six votes, it's well thought out by the whole council.
I think that's a good idea, huh?
So, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. I think that that, if I was coming in as a manager, I would think that that would be better than just getting five.
Right.
I mean, because you could get, you could change five people on the council, you know, just if the, in an election. I mean, I don't want to have it so that we're like some of the surrounding towns that all our head people get fired every time there's an election, or our top guy gets told, "Guess what? We didn't like you. You're moving to town." But if you can get six people on the council to say something, it's hard to do and...
Was the reason you picked five, or just the majority?
No, we just, it's the majority.
Just think, well, the majority.
If the majority, there's no reason. Would you mind going to six?
We could make it six.
My personal opinion, I'm without. I think that if you're going to attract a qualified candidate...
You have to have some assurance.
To add one more level of uncertainty, like every two years, the rules could change.
Absolutely. Good idea.
You know, just remember, a lower dwelling, not moving in or out of town, or staying in or out of town. Bottom line is, the town manager still serves at the pleasure of the council, so whether he's in town or not, or she's in town, or out, or whatever, he or she's an employee at will. Or at least, I guess, we'd say have a 30-day employment contract, because you have to give 30 days' notice. So that, that's really the main thing here. I mean, if I'm, if someone's thinking of coming here, I would, I'd be concerned about the moving into town or having the flexibility to move in, but I'd still have that Damocles sword that in 30 days, I could be out, whether I moved in the first day of my appointment.
Damocles sword already happened, so it's not like it can't happen with six votes.
Well, you know, there's certain, I mean, that's, that's an employee at will. There's a shelf life to an employee at will. The only problem is, nobody knows what it is.
We have so many candidates come one year that it was unbelievable, so I don't think you're not going to get candidates to do it. And they have to, one way, advertise it, maybe we should advertise it, they have to move to town. And we have the ones already that don't want to move. I don't know. Just a thought, because we used to get, I can't tell you, one time we got 100 candidates from all over the country.
This has turned into the trash talk.
What?
Took an hour for trash last night.
I mean, I think, I think it's a good idea to have six.
What you're going to do is you're going to have, you're going to put a regular draft together with corrections and everything. You're going to put the charter together with corrections and everything, so that we can go to the public hearing and have that.
Basically, anything you do tonight is recommended.
We're not going to make the public hearing, though.
Why?
We have a public hearing.
No, but we're going to make the July 10th day with the changes to go to the...
Yeah, these changes are, no.
No.
I don't think...
You have changes come out of the July 10th hearing.
Yeah, I don't think the Charter of Revision Commission is bound by any of the suggestions or any of the statements we make. These are suggestions, and that's it. But it is very polite.
Again, I forget my ignorance, but I just want to make sure I understand, so it was a public hearing, July 10th?
If the council sets their public hearing for July 10th.
So they said for July 10th, they can at that point consider more revisions, or they can consider more revisions now and then...
So in other words, we as the council could just give you suggestions on July 10th?
We can revise it on July 10th.
Because it's still a draft report.
And that way, keep hitting the, keep moving forward with the schedule that's set.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Have a public hearing on Tuesday.
Hang on a second.
In six, three, there's some of the, or mentions of the management, some of the names of the changes in there for the files.
Yes.
Planning is going in the course of law, there are actually two people, the town planner is one, and Zim is some person, the second one, so there's actually two, reference there. And director of civil defense is a 1950s, current town board emergency management director. That should be updated in there as well.
On July 10th, you can bring these over.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on Tuesday, July 10th, 2012, at 7:30 PM in the town council chambers to receive public input on the draft report.
Are there any further discussions? Motion by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Esposito, set the public hearing Tuesday, July 10th, 2012, at 7:30 PM in the town council chambers to receive public input on the draft report. Roll call.
Mayor Fingler.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rhodes.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Catrail.
Yes.
Councilor Dooley.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Again, Penny, thank you so much.
I want to have all these changes maybe written up where you guys act on at that public hearing, and if there's any other ones you want to add, and then I'll go back to the Charter of Revision Commission for recommendations.
Anthony, if you have any titles or something that need to be changed.
Lisa, Roger, thank you.
But we can't change anything. We have to just suggest it, so you're going to remind us on the 10th of...
But what Anthony was talking about, we're changing anything.
He's changing, but even that, we have to...
And he's also making recommendations.
Got it.
Rachel?
Yep. I like that.
Lisa, did you have to have it finalized on the 10th? Did you have to have it, was the 10th a magic date for finalizing the charter of recommendation changes?
No, I have, I need to schedule, I got it there with the, really, 17th is really like brought down, but it's...
So charter revision is going to have to meet after the 10th, before the 17th?
We have no, the council will accept or reject, and they have to leave that 45-day window open for the citizens to petition in case you reject the final report.
Well, can we get a copy of it after you finish changing it so that...
Well, we have to have the public hearing first, your recommendations.
No, I was just meant to see if they want any more things included in the report, the 10th, so they can say that the 10th.
Oh, yeah, that's what I have here. We have the draft report. And then, Charter of Revision Commission, if you make recommendations, has to meet again, and either accept your recommendations or reject them, and then send a final report, and then that's the final report. If there's no action on it, if the council accepts it. She's asking if the Charter of Revision Commission can meet July 10th.
I was just saying this, Tim, it might have a meeting right after the public hearing again.
I'm not going to be here on the 10th. But hopefully you'll have enough bodies.
We'll put out an email tomorrow and, you know, but tentatively, we'll set it. Roger, you good for the 10th?
Yes, sir.
All right. Great. All right, thank you. Again, thank you, Roger, Penny, Lisa, Joe. Item B, North Branford High School roof. I kept this on the agenda, you know, schools getting out. I didn't know if it was something we wanted to discuss at all.
Is it the second phase, right?
Right.
Well, I guess we have to, from my understanding, there wasn't enough money left over to proceed with the architectural drawings. But if we get money back from the roof that we did last summer...
Which we're, is moving along, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Right. So we have to really wait until we know how much we're getting back, because then we could use some of that money to add to what was left, which was approximately $50,000, somewhere around there, Anthony?
I don't know.
I think it was somewhere around $50,000, $55,000, but they're estimating beginning architectural fees to be over $100,000. So we don't have enough money at this point to move forward until we get money back from the roof we did last year.
I believe I got an email, I'll have to take it up last week, from the EDO 49 and 42, that we were approved. I don't know the total number, so I'll have to find that.
So once we get that, then if we have that for the July meeting, maybe if we have an idea what that is, then maybe we can move forward at that time, because there's nothing we can do at this point.
But the roof's not leaking at the moment.
No, it's not.
But the whole idea of the patch that we did last year, I thought was to buy us a couple year, like, two years approximately, so that we could do it correctly. So we should be okay right now to keep moving it along, though.
Especially if it doesn't rain.
Okay, item C, Stanley T. Williams Conversion Project. As we all know, we got an additional $350,000 STEEP grant. Kurt has now compiled.
But that's not Stanley T...
No.
I mean, it's why, yeah, right. Stanley T. Williams Project, we're working on going for the next round, which is opening up in, I think, July or August, August 1st.
It had to be in by August 1st?
It has to be postmarked, I believe, by August 1st, so it'll have to be on the next council agenda.
On the next council agenda.
Start with somebody again for action on that.
Item D, suspense lists. I passed history.
This is just a follow-up from the discussion at the last town council meeting about the suspense list. You had asked for the entire listing of those folks that are on suspense currently. Ken Delphini is here tonight, the collector, and if there's any questions regarding the suspense process. The number for the 2011-12 year for the suspense collection at this point, when the report was done, was 4,700. It's now in excess of nine grand for the current year. So just because they're on suspense doesn't mean that they're lost and forgotten. They do come in.
Has anything been done about any of these yet?
They're in the state, they're in the marshal's hands.
They're in the marshal's hands?
Right.
Even the ones that are from the 1990s?
The most recent ones.
What year is...
We, a couple of years ago, when I first got here, I think it was in 2009, we gave Mark White, I think roughly 2005 or '04 through 2008, it was a huge stack. And then currently, I just gave...
What happened with that huge stack? Did we get any money out of it?
We got about $30,000.
That's not a bad deal.
No, no, you can figure about 5%, 10%, somewhere in there.
I see a lot of names on these lists that are still living right in town.
I believe it, absolutely. And I gave the marshal Neil in the beginning of May, got roughly about $1,301,000, and that covered years 6 through 10. So we try and go back, you know, you just get two minutes, as many as you can handle.
What about going right to the collection agency? Won't they just go after it?
Yeah, collection agency is the next step. No offense to Andy Marshall, he sends out correspondence, and either it's going to intimidate you enough to pay, or you're just going to ignore it. You know, sometimes they... You know, you know, we have to, you know, sometimes they call us, but most of the time it's to help they deal directly with the town. The next step would be the collection agency. They have the access to, say, the socials and everything else. They're a lot more aggressive.
Well, just, it kind of irks me a little bit that, over the years, there's a bunch of names that are the same over the years.
Yeah. People are, you know, and that's what I was telling about an individual account, he would happen, you could clever it up, and a lot of people are, it's how they get around motor vehicles. When they do it, it's Vinnie Vincent D.
I understand they change their names, that's what people do with bankruptcies too with businesses.
I just got one where it was, you know, bankruptcy.
But if you have people that do that, you should send those right to the collection agency and let them go after them.
Well, I have to give, I guess, permission to use it.
Okay, we can handle that.
Yeah, you have to, yes.
Well, we can handle that.
Ken, do you use motor vehicle for all these people as well?
One each of them.
What do you mean, do I use motor?
You have access to DMV?
Yeah.
Do you run these against DMV?
Yeah, rarely is it different. If I give one on a ten, I have...
So you have a printout that matches this list from DMV?
Oh, no, I have to go on their website, and I have to look up each individual one.
But your account for the town has, should have this in your history of the searches.
I'm not sure I'm on the...
In other words, if you search everybody with the last name starting with S, that should be in your history of DMV inquiries, correct?
I have to, the only way I can search DMV, I have to go by plate number, name, VIN.
But that's all stored where you have it, you could get a printout to match it up?
Individual basis. I can't get every, no, I think what you're asking, can I get a complete printout of everybody?
That you searched for?
I have, I do it each one separately. But yeah, I'd have to print one each one separately. I only print them if I get a different address. If I go on the screen and everything matches to where we're currently filling, I could collect. Every once in a while, I'll call and see if their license is changed. But again, you have to do that on an individual basis.
I guess where I'm confused, maybe you could clear up, why would we put motor vehicle on here anyway? I mean, no matter what, people change their name, when you go to register your car, if you owe taxes, you can't register your car. So you have to pay the taxes.
If everything matches with motor vehicles, the name has to match exactly. It can't be Ken, and I'm registering as Kenneth, it's going to go through.
They can't legally change their name just by saying it's a different name and writing it down.
Oh, no, but I can go by initials, I can go by K, I can go by K.A., I can go by Ken, I can go by Kenneth, I can go by Ken, K.P.N.N. And that's, every time you do that, that's a plus two years.
You don't have to use your legal name to register a vehicle?
No, motor vehicles, you can't handle it.
That makes no sense.
No.
What's this single page says, collection agency report? It's a single page, both sides?
That's a report I can launch to get ready to say for a collection.
All right, so like these things from like, do you have one of these copies in front of you?
I don't, no.
You don't? So I have a, I have a number here of, the list number of fifty-three, fifty-eight, and I just wondered if you could explain that to us, like what's going on with that one?
Do you have a page? You've got it bottom on the bottom, do a page.
A page?
Page number.
Page one of two.
It's just a back and forth.
It's the last page, all right, that he gave us.
It's, the first list number is forty-eight, sixty-eight at the top of it.
Oh, okay.
Right, so go down, go down three to fifty-three, fifty-eight. It's from nineteen ninety-seven, and if you could just tell me, like, what would the history be on something like that?
Part of the Foothill Road subdivision.
What, some sort of township?
Yeah, this one here, and then it repeats itself, the same number and stuff?
Ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
One is the, Foothill Road subdivision.
So it's a Foothill Road subdivision, and...
These stuff's supposed to be turned over to the town, never been turned over.
Land trust.
Land trust.
Right, I think eventually got turned over, but it probably backed back.
So the taxes were, so there's like three thousand dollars in back taxes that were never paid?
So R is real estate, I take it, the type is real estate?
A lot of those on that real estate page are in the county attorney's office currently. The first one got basqueting, another similar situation, a piece of land, when they developed that neighborhood, turned over to the town, wasn't turned over to the town, paperwork was never properly done, we just keep generating tax bills.
How about the ones that are actually doing work for the town that are on here?
On the real estate list?
See, if it's an R, if it's an R, it's real estate. If it's a P, it's personal property, I take it, right?
What's M, motor vehicle?
Motor vehicle.
All right.
And S is supplemental?
So it's motor vehicle? I mean, it's... Almost looks like some people got free rides.
Yeah.
I don't know about free rides, but...
Overlooked.
Overlooked. So I should be using Tony, Ant?
You can't. A, Al Fox. A.S. Legent.
I don't understand how that can happen.
Remember when, when we were talking and I gave you the example of the individual?
So John, the marshal, Longobardi has his, what's?
He has the motor vehicle and the supplemental and personal property, the real estate.
Tax warrants or the suspensions?
He has tax warrants, which includes those that are on suspension.
Can I ask you a question about the suspensions?
Please.
I guess I'd ask Anthony. Anthony, these, the numbers in the dollar amount. I understand the suspense collections are the amount that you collected off of that dollar amount.
Right.
Am I to assume that the dollars in the dollar amount across from that year are the amount of taxes that were not paid?
No, that's the amount that was put on.
Okay, tell me, tell me how you decide to put on and how, and how much you put on.
You mean into suspense?
That's right.
How I go about it? It's just, if I feel on any given file that I've exhausted all efforts that I can do, okay, I'll put it on a list that's presented to you of the town council for suspense. It does not mean that it doesn't go to the marshal. The marshal will still get...
But is there any rhyme or reason here on the amount or the ones that go on the dollar amount? I'll tell you very frankly what I'm looking at here.
Two thousand and six.
The year before the recession, two oh-six, two oh-seven, we've got a whopping two hundred and thirty-one, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The next year, which is the first year of the recession, two oh-seven, two oh-eight, it's only sixteen thousand, two twenty-two. And then two oh-eight, two oh-nine, the year after that, it's only sixteen thousand, nine thirty-one. And then each year, nine, ten, it's thirty-two, ten, eleven, it's twenty-eight. I would think there'd be more, I would think the amounts would be higher during the recession. In other words, what, what is your formula for deciding whether to put something on a suspense list? You said, have you tried to...
It's just, I can't go anywhere with it. In other words, I check motor vehicles, and I check the state, see if they're registered as state, if they're personal property.
So you do, so, so, let me ask you another blunt, another blunt question. Is, have you ever been advised that there's a policy in the town about not notifying residents who are delinquent in their taxes, let's say it's for motor vehicle, that non-payment of your taxes could result in the suspension of your registration?
I put that on, if you become delinquent, I send out a, what is called a, basically a delinquent's statement. After that, I also send out a demand. There's a little spot where I put, you know, failure to respond, and I use the word may, may result in a request for non-delictive registration.
Is there any reason why the sheriff can't use a letter with stating that if you don't pay your motor, if you don't pay your motor vehicle tax, that your registration will be suspended?
I don't think there's anything preventing it from happening.
And the same thing for, let's say, a commercial establishment, if they're, if they're delinquent in their taxes, that they may not be able to collect sales tax? Because you can report them to the, to the state as well?
I mean, the demand statement is just, I should give you a copy, it's just what's in the state statute, it's kind of old English, where they use the term, you know, you put shackles, you can garnish your wages, et cetera.
But there's no problem with the sheriff putting in...
Putting in his correspondence?
In his correspondence that if you're a fingernail polishing place, that if you don't, if you're delinquent in your taxes, we will report you to the, your license will be suspended by the health department?
I'll give you an example, one of the accounts that the sheriff has is a place called Screwie Louis, it's down that way?
Yeah.
He has it for collections, it's personal property, and supposedly he's having to go in there, and he can let them know, or that, he can advise, I guess, the state people with respect of their license and have it revoked.
Well, actually, you would have to do that, would you not? Wouldn't you have to report it to the state?
He does that.
No, the tax, tax collector would...
I would think that you have to do that.
You would have to do that.
Well, I mean, actually request that be revoked, yeah, but he can let them know that that's what...
Yeah, that's what the tax, the town intends to do.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think, actually, Mr. Longobardi, who just came in, I...
Before, we ask you, Ken, can you, with the suspense list, can you get a printout of your matchups with DMV for the council of your inquiries to them, checking, referencing the addresses?
No, I mean, I can't, I mean, the DMV system that I build on, you know, again, if an individual is on it, okay, again, I go in behind with my plate number, or, you know, VIN, or name, or something to try and pick it up, and then it gives me an address. If that address is the same as what he has on file, that's, that's what they have, that's what I have.
So they don't store your account inquiries where you can go back and print them out?
No.
Like to make a records request?
No, they're very good, and when I call, I can't look up, you know, some information, and sometimes they're very good, and I say, well, let me check their license, and sometimes we get a different address that way.
So where's the lockbox located?
PO box. Well, lockbox is one we use the services of TD Bank, when we send out, when people send in their bills, PO box. It's our regular PO box. And so the representative from TD Bank will go and pick them up, bring it to TD Bank, I would guess it's up in Britain. And they just go through them and process them for us. And anything that has back tags on it, they send back to us. Anything that's just a check, if they don't have a matching bill, they send everything back.
So if someone sent the check in, and let's say their car was registered Kenneth, whatever, and the check they sent in said Ken, are we going to accept that check?
I'll accept it.
No, but I mean, does it get bounced out by the people that are doing this?
If, if, if it's not a match, yeah, they send it back.
So we can be getting...
Even if they have a list number on it of what they're paying for?
If, if the list, if, there's a coding underneath each bill, don't forget, we only use lockbox two months out of the year, July and January. Okay, and that's it, it's just on the current bills. And if the coding down the bottom, you know, you know, matches, if the payment matches, they'll send it to us. And, or rather, processes through. I look at the file, it pops out weird, which it does sometimes, it'll come out back taxes, or it'll say overpayment, you know, once, once I do it, and I look into it for, if the list number matches, yes, they'll...
But if they don't write in the memo, let's say, you know, whatever.
Fifty-eight, ninety-three.
Right.
Yeah, if there's any, if they have just any doubt whatsoever, they send it back, back to us, for us to do ourselves.
So you're able to...
Yeah, and then we research it and so...
Andrew, did you get your question answered? On motor vehicle?
Not now. What, what can, they don't give me any, I mean, I've never asked for one, but I don't think they keep tabs of, you know, what accounts have been opened up and what to look into. I've never asked the question.
Yeah.
I mean, I just go in and look, and if, as I say, if the address is different, I print that page and then nail out a new bill to that address and see what happens. I can ask, I mean, if there's any...
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Anyone else have any questions on this? No, but, you know, if you gave me probably a half hour, I could probably get, go find ten of these people right in town. It's not that difficult.
For percentage?
No, not for a percentage.
Are we going to move with the collection agency or not? Where do you want to sit up?
I think at one point.
Around nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and one, that collection agency, the same one and two, and a principal discurrent for a company that I gave this on.
Now, what's the benefit of that versus the marshal doing it?
I think he has more, as I say, he is technologically better equipped to search, he can find, I don't know how, but he can, he can find and solve it.
That's the collection?
The collection agency. I don't think...
Well, I'll be honest with you, the marshal is on the same system that I have for finding people, so, in my opinion, not because I am a marshal.
Sure.
I find collection agencies, you're just a number where we're individuals, and that's how we make a living, so the aggressiveness is in the individual to produce versus a collection agency where you're going to just get ten dozen letters and it's going to take, you know, months down the road.
I've never...
I mean, I think if he, if he runs all these names to try and find current addresses outside of who we know is our neighbors and businesses, I think there's a good possibility that if, even if we wanted to give it a couple of months before we decided otherwise to try it.
Well, nothing, you know, when it goes into suspense, that does not mean it's written off.
No, it just comes off for accounting purposes, but it's still collectible.
It comes up for accounting purposes, and the only time something gets written off is based on the fifteen-year rule.
Yeah.
After fifteen years, it's a dead issue. You cannot collect. That's state statute.
Andrew, let me ask you a question. When, if any of these, when the marshal gets through with it, and says they can't go any further with it, is it time to send it to a collection agency then? Or...
Well, it depends on the scenario.
Does the marshal ever not give up on something? Or does he send the town back a list and say...
The warrant lapses after sixty days.
I can't really do anything.
So what hap, what happened, do you apply for another warrant?
Yeah, yeah, you get a redo with the interest and so forth.
There's a lot of names on here for one guy, too, not for none.
Well, a lot, a lot of these people are still...
I know that, but I'll tell you what, just give it to the collection agency and let them go.
No, I, I want to give the marshal the first shot at it, but when does, when does the marshal give up on it? Or does he ever give up on it and send it back to the town and say, listen, these people, we can't find anything on them?
I believe the marshal's, the marshal's here.
Everybody is different, I mean, he, Neil is here.
Neil, would you like to speak?
Wanted to see how far, Neil.
Would you like to comment? Just please state your name for the council, please.
I'm Neil Longobardi, County State Marshal, presently working with Ken in the town, collecting some back taxes, motor vehicle, personal property. I'm sorry about the time, I was stuck on ninety-one for an hour and fifteen minutes in rollover. I was in one spot for an hour and fifteen minutes. I tried calling John to let him know that. However, the difference between what I... However, the difference between what I can do and what a collection agency can do, I spoke with three tax collectors today, other than Ken, and one, one town was using a collection agency, and they, they got away from it, they told me to issue it because they weren't really having the luck in, in getting to return it, that they thought. The only difference that the, the thing that the collection agency can do, that I or any other marshal can't do, is go to, and, and report it to a credit bureau. And I don't know if I can't report it to a credit bureau, I don't know if the tax collector would have to report someone delinquent on taxes to the credit bureau. The, the hardest part of it is, many of these people know and realize that they registered their cars, I think it's every two years now, and they, they know that they can skip two years' taxes until it comes time to register. Today, I had four phone calls of people that needed to register, and now they want to pay their taxes, and they don't understand why I won't take a personal check. You won't take a personal check.
No.
They give you the check, you give them the release, they stop paying off the check, but the check is no good to begin with. So there's, it's, there's a lot of pros and cons on it, in, in the way it's, it's collected. In my letter, I state, no personal checks, please, please use a bank draft, or a money board, or a certified check. I presently, right now, I'm sitting on my desk, I have ten thousand dollars worth of personal checks, that I'm going to deposit tomorrow morning. Exactly, at, at one time, I used to take all the personal checks, I used the Bank of America, People's Bank, so on and so forth, and I used to go, and I used to cash them out, for the sole reason of not having to deal with fees on a bonds check, that I would have to pay. However, now, it's gotten even worse with the banks, because, I think Bank of America charges ten dollars to cash, cash your check if you don't have an account there, Wells Fargo charges, I forgot where I was the other day, Citizens Bank.
Citizens.
Citizens Bank, they, they charge, so you, you have no choice but to deposit them into my trustee account, which is at TD Bank, and wait ten days. They, they, TD Banks will, if I deposit a thousand dollars, that, that thousand dollars will show up in my bank, in my account, in two days, but it does not mean the checks have cleared. They tell you right up front, wait ten days, a week is not even good enough, and I think that's ridiculous, but, people read the letter, it's, it's, it's highlighted in bold, bold print, please don't use a personal check, but they send their personal checks?
You don't know that as well, I know?
Well, it costs another two, three dollars to get a bank.
I, I use some pretty strong letters, which Attorney Jesmond wanted to, to see some of the ones that I use in other towns, and that's what I have with me.
Do you use them in North Branford?
Pardon me?
Do you use them in North Branford?
I have used them in North Branford in the past, however, when I started collecting the taxes, Ken asked to see a copy of the letter that I was going to be sending out with the tax warrants, and I believe he brought the letter to Anthony, who knew, and I, you know, things, things like saying that, as, as I'm, like, the one that I have right now, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses with me, but, that, this is a final notice, this is, this would have been a second letter that they received from me, that I, that we would, it doesn't say who would request, but Ken, as a tax collector, would have to request, suspension of all motor vehicle registrations in your name from the State Department of Motor Vehicles, in accordance with section fourteen dash thirty-three of the Connecticut General Statutes. That may, that may get somebody to write a check. It's, it's, it's not a threat, I mean, it's, 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 you know, it's what we will do. Then there's others that say, we will garnish wages, we will levy bank accounts, we will request suspension of your sales tax permit, or suspension of any health or food license or liquor license, we have the authority to do that.
Did you send those letters out?
I'm sorry? I didn't send that letter out.
The aggressive letter was called not to-
Ask not to.
Why?
Ask not to.
By who?
I guess Ken, Anthony, didn't want that type of letter going out.
Neil, are those different format letters or the same?
There's, there's all different ones here.
Can we, we, can we look at them and relay back to you, if you want to start down-
I want to refer John to look at it. Can you tell us, look at them first?
Here, no, the council-
This is, okay, well, this is-
That's your regular letter for-
This is the letter, but I, this is the letter that went out with all, if I may.
Yep.
This is the letter that went out with all, all the tax, I have one for you.
Fair.
Thanks, John.
This is the present letter used?
Thank you.
This is what?
No, it has been used, or has. So presently, have you sent this out, or no?
This is the letter that I sent out, whatever tax warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, it was like fifteen hundred views that went out.
So is the stronger letter typically your second letter, anyway, or?
Um, yes.
But not here?
No.
That's responded. So this is just basically-
And I'll tell you, I-
This is a generic letter, then?
I, I've been collecting taxes for many years, not just in North Branford, but for other, other towns in the area, and this is probably the, the first year, and it's not just in North Branford, that I see people who have a, a tax bill of a hundred and fifty dollars, only seventy-five dollars, and they call, can I make three payments? Can I make two payments? You, you, you just don't have the money now, I, I don't, I don't know what it's, you know, what it, I, there's many people that I, you know, yes, no problem, and I, I can't tell you, I mean, I hear some stories, that I even waive my fee, a thirty-dollar fee or a forty-dollar fee, just send me, send me the tax money for your taxes and, and the warrant fee, I waive my fee on it. It's, it's, it, there's a sad situation out there.
Yeah.
And people will do everything they can, not, not to pay their taxes, and wait until that, that dire minute where they have to register their vehicles.
Yeah, my question to Andrew was, when do you give up on these, or stop collecting these, and should, at that point, it ever go to a collection agency, or you don't feel it's of that value?
I, I don't, I don't feel that the collection agency, whether it, it, me as the marshal, or any one of the other sixty-three marshals that are out there, I, I don't think the collection agency would, would be any more successful than-
Now, I'm not asking if it's more successful, I'm asking, when you give up on whatever you give up on, say, you can't make any more headway on-
I, I-
On these, these fifty warrants.
I don't give up, I don't give up.
Okay.
The warrant outages us.
Right, but at, at a certain point, if you have two thousand warrants sitting on your desk, there's got to be some that, that you feel you can't proceed any further with, should those come back to the town, and then should they try a collection agency, or?
I, I, I believe that they should reissue a warrant.
Okay.
I know.
So continually reissuing the warrant until?
I really-
Is that, is that a problem, Ken?
No, you just re, 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 do it again, so it's not shared today, but I would-
And I'm not so sure that he cannot just redate the warrant, I don't know if we would have to print the whole new ones, I've had some tax collector say, I didn't have the balance of interest on it. Now, when, when New Haven puts out a warrant, I get, I get interest on it for ninety days, for three months, it's, it's automatically right on the bottom of the, of the warrant. They, they are the only town that does that, and obviously, it's the program that they use that, that's, that's all he does.
So Ken, the suspense list was not turned into warrants yet, correct?
Oh, no, he had the-
Oh, you have the suspense list warrants?
It's, it's not, it's not given to Neil as a suspense list, he just gets the warrants with John Doe's name on it.
Oh, so he has these already as warrants?
Oh, yeah, he, he got one.
Those are, those are the ones that I, I got, two weeks ago.
Beginning of May, whatever we gave you May, I'm beginning of May.
Okay, now-
Seven days' time.
What about the stuff?
There was a separate budget you gave me, and I think that's-
Something's wrong, is right.
There were some six dollar, thirty-five cent warrants on there.
When, when did you get the, when the-
From two thousand and two.
When did he get the stuff that's from the nineties and early two thousands, just a week's ago?
I believe so. Everything, both the warrants I got were from full eight, eight, nine, ten.
Okay.
We ran-
Because eleven, eleven isn't coming out now until-
Right.
-July.
But I'm trying to figure out, have you just got all these stuff back years now, because we just opened this whole can of worms up?
No, no, we, we, what, what I ran for Neil in the very beginning was grand list year six through ten, I didn't go back farther than that.
Because Mark White had already gone through this.
We had already done, done them one.
And what'd you do with the ones Mark White already went through?
Those are on the suspense list?
They're on the suspense.
Right, so they're just sitting there now, and everybody forgot about them?
We should take those and go back to them.
Those you should go to the-
Yeah, sure, those are your suspense list.
Yeah.
And then this aggressive letter, why was that not sent out? Or whose decision is that to send it out, or not to send it out?
I didn't-
I never saw a second letter. There's just a lot of money sitting here that, you know, people-
And I understand the economy, and I'm struggling too.
We're all struggling, yeah.
You know, I under, you know, there are certain circumstances, which I'm sure we can work with people, but I see a lot of names on here that-
That have going businesses, that are doing all kinds of things.
Right.
And, uh-
And that are actually doing work for the town.
There you go.
So-
And why aren't they getting their registration suspended, or Leans putting on their property or something, I mean, it, it's like they're just getting away with it when everybody else has to pay their taxes, they go about their business, and don't pay their taxes.
A lien can only be put on a piece of property for a property tax-
Right.
For real estate.
Well, they could suspend their motor vehicle licenses.
No, not the licenser, the registration.
The registration, yeah.
You can suspend the registration for-
These things need to start getting done.
Well, I think, I think his initial letter that he uses for other towns, we should use the aggressive letter.
Yeah, did you receive that last day?
That's fine and dandy, but we got stuff from before, that's forgotten about.
We just left here for, for two thousand, ninety-nine, ninety-seven, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see these in any one of the, any, any of the warrants that I got two weeks ago. Now, for that, what if I got them out my car? Do you mind if I round my car?
Go right ahead, sir.
Round the-
No, it's fine.
That's Andrew's.
I'm going to round up my car.
Okay.
Will this move on and come back?
You want to move on and come back to this?
Yeah, we can go, we can come back to this. All right, we're going to go back to that, or we're going to go to nine, new business discussion in action regarding, A, Kurt Weiss as acting town manager.
I want to see most people call Kurt Weiss as acting town manager, until they bring someone that's been hired.
Second. Moved by Councillor Wentworth, seconded by Councillor Esposito, roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Angeloni?
Yes.
Commissioner Caprio?
Yes.
Commissioner Dooty?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawnin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wentworth? Yes.
I'd just like to add Kurt, I want to thank you, oh, I know it was short notice, and I really appreciate you stepping up, and thank all the department heads, I know you've all been great, and I really appreciate it, we all do, thank you. Item B, town manager position, item I, suggested motion to advertise for interim town manager.
I make a motion to authorize acting town manager Kurt Weiss to see candidates for the position of interim town manager.
Moved by Councillor Angeloni, seconded by Councillor Wentworth. I just want to add, interim, acting town manager Kurt Weiss mentioned to me today that he did receive a call in regards to a possible candidate, I will get all the information to you all.
You want to do this as a full council, right, you don't want to do a subcommittee thing?
Right now, for interim, I think we should do a full council.
Yeah, we, we can do a full council for, for the other thing, too, you know, that is where all of us are in on. I think that's typically the way it's been done, right? Well, last time, when we hired the, the last town manager, we had a subcommittee, I was on, I think Mike was on it with me, and I forget who it was, that was four years ago or so. Yeah, we, I think we should just- Do it as a full council, yeah, absolutely.
And maybe even get some input from some of the department heads, too.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Angeloni?
Yes.
Commissioner Caprio?
Yes.
Commissioner Dooty?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawnin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wentworth? Yes.
Now, I put on here, you know, suggested motion to advertise for a permanent town manager, do we want to do both at the same time, or?
Yeah, I would get the ball rolling on everything.
Yeah.
All right.
It's going to be a long summer.
Right, Kurt? You're going ICMA, Kurt, is where, is that where you're headed?
Well, there's a bunch, Debbie, one of them, CCM, there's, Debbie will be getting around.
I already looked at a few on the ICMA and got a few-
Right, that's the logical one, that, that needs information wide.
Right.
Matter of fact, CCM's going to come in, I have them on our next agenda.
Good.
They're good, we'll get into that when they come, but, all right, so I have a motion.
I make a motion to authorize acting town manager Kurt Weiss to advertise for the position of town manager. Second.
Moved by Councillor Angeloni, seconded by Councillor Wentworth, roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Angeloni?
Yes.
Commissioner Caprio?
Yes.
Commissioner Dooty?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawnin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wentworth? Yes.
Sir, are you ready? Mr. Longobardi? Are you ready?
Yes.
Somebody's calling to pay their taxes.
I, I don't have it out my car with me, but, but that list that I, I looked at, it, it's, it's a hell of a bigger-
Well, he said he only ran six through ten for you, he-
Remember, that's what we discussed, guys?
He started from oh-six.
To get you, to get you last weekend with four.
I'm a bit different, sure, but I'm saying the majority, the fifteen hundred that he's got, were six through ten.
Does he use that aggressive letter?
No, I'm saying-
Yeah, here, here, there was not that bad.
You need to pay your taxes.
Majority of them were ten.
There's probably eight, a lot of eighteen, nine.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, and then we're going to authorize you to use the aggressive letter.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you want on the run, the whole suspense list, and then you start out?
Yeah, the whole suspense list.
Start out with a warrant for the whole suspense list?
Yeah.
Is that a big problem, Ken, running?
No, but do you want just suspense, or anything that's outstanding?
I would run anything outstanding, and see if we could fish something in.
Huge, I mean, when you think about it, I mean, that's-
Do we apply the Jeopardy tax, or no, the Jeopardy tax?
If you think you can run the, the Jeopardy, once the two thousand and eleven bills are up there, and you can, I'd have to make sure I can include two thousand and eleven by the use of the Jeopardy Act, that'll just increase it, and the volume will be tremendous.
Yeah, I think whatever you could run, you give it to them, and then go from there.
What's collectible?
But with the aggressive letter, that you use for the other towns, if everybody is in agreement with that.
Two thousand and eleven didn't go out yet, those are the bills that are just going out this year.
Yeah, but with, with my Jeopardy, if you think future collections are quote-unquote in jeopardy, then you can-
If they're on the list and you-
If they're on the list and you...
They're already on the list.
Yeah, then you assume that...
Right. No, you can't just randomly pick people and say you're in jeopardy and send them the letter. It's, if you're, if they're on the list, right.
I, I don't think you can do a jeopardy collection for one year.
You can't do one year.
No, it's, it's got to be the business to be, a certain timeline, you know, where you can include a jeopardy tax, but, eight out of it, I, I don't think it's a year or two years, I mean...
No, I think it's three years and back.
And then I have to see if our system can do it because it's saying that, you know, your taxes are due July one, that's current. Okay, but it's not, it's not past due, see what I mean?
Yeah, whatever you can run to date, I guess, and then back to...
It would be a hundred percent everything but eleven.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we're good?
We're good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you. Um, C, solid waste management alternative bid results.
You want the eight, eight D two?
Appropriation transfers?
No. The part two to the eight D.
Two small i's, Anthony.
Eight D?
Eight D.
All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the real estate list we have here.
D two, discussion regarding collections.
Well, we've never answered the question. At some point, we...
When we send it?
When the marshal is satisfied that he has done pretty much as much as he can do, what are we going to do with uncollected taxes that are still outstanding? And I thought where we were going was whether or not we would consider using a collection agency at the point at which his efforts are exhausted.
That's what I asked him the last time.
Oh, you didn't get an answer?
No. But we, he said...
He said reissue the warrants is what he said.
Yeah, he said reissue the warrants and keep on doing that. He feels, he has a better chance collecting than a collection agency.
This is real estate, this is a different animal. This is...
Also, yeah, it's a big animal too.
I don't think we need to make a decision right now. Let him do his job and if it produces results, fine.
Right.
At some point in time, if we choose to go in a different direction, there's nothing to preclude us from doing that.
No, that's why we kinda let it die there, you know, instead of pushing for a collection, for a collection agency.
All right, so we'll table that for you two.
Well, we haven't looked, I mean...
No, if this one, eight one.
This one's going to the town attorney though. Right, well, you're saying, are you asking to send it to the town attorney?
Correct, yeah. The, the real estate ones have to go for the council before they go to the town attorney's office.
Okay.
So there's two different animals on the table, there's the...
And these are from like year two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand five, six.
There's our sixes on here, yeah.
There are some people that have significant bills.
I'll move the motion that, um, hereby is out, North Cranford Town Council endorses the attached listing of properties with the illiquid real estate taxes that can proceed to the town attorney's office for further collection efforts.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Dooty, seconded by Councillor Angeloni.
So I get an understanding of this, so, 'cause if we don't move this list from these ages and the people that owe this taxes actually sell their house?
We'll get it, we'll get it.
Oh, we get it? There's a lien on it already?
We got one guy from oh-two to oh-ten, he is very consistent.
How quick do we put a lien on them?
Every year, like, I'm about, I'm...
So like, uh...
For the, for the two thousand and ten grand, which is just about to, to end, come June thirtieth, I, they've been written to, I write them and I give them, uh, we have one just called Notice of Intent to Lean. We try by state statute, I have to let you know that we're gonna do that on...
Okay.
Okay, so on June thirtieth, I will upload anything that's not paid in real estate, you know, lean by state.
And then, then you...
You got some, from oh-two to two thousand and ten for almost thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's a first for that one.
It's like, you know, what are, what are we doing? It's ten years almost, eight years.
Well, there's, I, I, from what I know, there's a history behind that.
What the hell is Tomah Burke, is that a condominium?
No, that's off, I'm not over it.
Maybe we should find out about that history.
Kurt said it was...
Have I heard it from him?
The Superfund site. Or the Open Space Fund, and it never had to change.
Why doesn't somebody do that? You know what, Kurt, on the lands that were supposed to go to, see, I'm gonna make you wear your engineering hat now. Um, like, that were supposed to go into open space and stuff, I mean, I've been involved with that a couple times and typically...
That's supposed to happen.
That's supposed to happen before any COs are issued. So do we blame the building official?
Absolutely not.
No, all right.
Some of those, I mean, but I think some of those, they were supposed to do it within the process. I mean, the process is better now, but a lot of those, those are pretty old and...
So what happens with them?
I mean, so like now, I mean, somebody ought to give the land, there must be some lawyer somewhere that has the ability to...
Well, one of the ones you see on there, I, I think it was, it was turned over subsequently to the land trust, but the back taxes somehow, I don't know the whole...
But realistically, we can't collect those taxes.
Yeah.
Can we?
And I think, I think that's a hundred percent correct, 'cause, 'cause what I think you brought up, I think that was the case there. Somehow it was between the land trust and them and something got filed between them. It wasn't something the town was directly about.
Okay.
It was the land trust.
So can't we, can't we clear those up administratively here?
Yeah, I, I spotted it, John's office.
Okay, so then when they come back, John'll just say, get rid of this.
Pay the taxes, a little bit back before you guys go pay the taxes and so on.
Got it.
Cleans, cleans everything up.
All right.
Thank you. Cleanup, man.
So did I have this sloppy guy?
Set the motions on the floor.
Councilor Dooty and Councilor Angeloni.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Okay. Now, item C, solid waste management alternatives bid results.
If I can just touch, touch on that, the last meeting, the motions, warrant, contract for, uh, collections, basically, collections, automated collection disposal, to John's rep, uh, and judicial, there's a judicial, uh, that agreed that be prepared by the town attorney's office, review was prepared by the town attorney's office. So those awards did go out, um, and I think John's office had, were working on the agreement. There was a draft, including the, uh, pack on the table. My office and purchasing is also, for just a few comments, uh, to John's office, it didn't happen until today, so, uh, I think John's, by just looking at it now, nothing major, but there's some issues that we just thought we'd highlight. If the rest of it, then we will...
I think there's a fundamental issue as to whether or not, uh, you wanna still go with the automated. I don't know whether that was finally decided or not. I drew it, I drafted it as if you did, and, uh, this is the, this is pretty much the, uh, an initial draft. It incorporates by reference the bidding document, the, uh, request for proposals as well in it, but, um, I, Kurt's right, I'm, I'm looking at some, um, some comments here that I don't know that they go to the substance, but if, this is drafted in terms of the automated, there are some questions that I had, uh, that could be part of this contract, which means part of negotiations, um, like what happens if, uh, well, I guess I heard from the mayor that, that there's a fifteen dollar charge for these totes that we didn't...
Well, I attended a meeting, deputy mayor was there, Fran was there, Bezudos, John's, Andrew Esposito, Michelle, and there were a couple things that arose, um, in the discussion.
But that's not in there still, right?
About the fifteen dollars?
About the fifteen dollars.
It's fifteen dollars a month.
Right, that...
So that's a hundred eighty a year.
Right.
No, there were, there was something in here that...
Well, it was in their bid documents.
If there was an, it was in the RFP or whatever.
That was eighty-seven pages.
If, yeah, I mean, they were as surprised as, you know, they were going through it and it was like...
At that meeting, there was misunderstanding when we knew John's refus submitted a proposal that should have set a price for the residents to pay for a second toter if they wanted one. They interpreted the proposal to be a fifteen dollar a month, an additional collection fee for the resident for that second toter. So in the meeting that we had, they realized that they misunderstood the RFP and said, no, there was no fifteen dollar fee for the residents for the second toter. If a resident wants to purchase one, then they would go with the John's purchase fee.
What was the purchase price, eighty dollars?
Sixty, I believe.
Sixty.
I don't recall, but I believe they're getting two toters, right? A larger one and a smaller toter.
Well, recycling.
Recycling.
Um, but both were the same size though. Yeah, both were the same size. We want both the same size. Ninety-six gallons.
Oh, you did? Yeah, okay. I had to leave at that time, but...
Yeah.
So if society knew about the fifteen dollars, it's not in here.
Well, we're hoping it's not in there.
No, it is.
All right, good. Man, one of the questions...
At the meeting, Al, if you remember correctly, council...
We got rid of it.
That, that was taken out. It was interpretation by them.
Um, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Well, one of the issues, one of the things, did you discuss what happens if a tote is damaged, who replaces it and...
No, I didn't, yeah.
Is there, does the council have an opinion on that?
I think we touched on it, Al, that they will replace the difference.
Well, the only thing, you know, what came out of this meeting, John, was that if, you know, we were heading towards automatic, automated pickup, but not until January one because they have to buy their contract, they have to educate the public, and they're, you know, they have, sitting there talking to them, they have all these different means of, um, you know, doing that.
Through public access with...
Right, and then, then like...
Postcards.
So...
Informational purposes.
And then they felt that, you know, by the time they did that, we'd be like right around Thanksgiving and they thought, you know what, we shouldn't switch right before the holidays.
Christmas.
On how we're doing it, so, um...
Went to the January one thirteen.
Right, is when the automated would start.
Yeah. Just because of informational purposes.
And evidently each toter is barcoded.
Right.
So, um, I don't know how you keep track of that.
So if someone steals someone else's, they can tell where it belongs?
Yeah, if it ends up two blocks away, they know that it belongs to you and not...
I guess the responsibility would be up to the contractor to locate the toter.
Correct. They would scan, scan the barcode and they know it's not at the correct house.
So the question is again, do they, do they replace a, a tote that's been damaged, A, by themselves or B, by somebody else?
I believe that needs to be addressed though, because I think there would be a cost involved for the resident. I'm not sure, but I think that needs to be addressed.
It's not in here at all, anywhere on that toter?
No, the only thing that's in here beyond the essentials is the tape of the last meeting where, uh, which we listened to, where representations were made and, and the council persons had their, uh, statements, and those were included because, uh, uh, the representatives of John's indicated that they would, they would do it that way. But I didn't hear anything at that meeting about, for instance, the damages or the fifteen dollars and, and I, and Kurt, um, has some other language in here.
Well, you, you've actually got it, I mean, the concept, the, the detail has to get to, it says, a customer may request additional totes to contractor customers at the customer's expense. Yeah, and I did one, an additional one, um, it's on page eight, I mean, the contractor shall replace, at the contractor's expense, any damaged, non-functional tote during the contract, including any dual terms. So it puts it back on the, uh...
Contract.
On the contractor.
Good.
He's responsible and at the end, you know, they become ours. At the end, and this is one of the things that, you know, it was in, uh, John's proposal, you know, the issue of, like, basically, uh, I think from the sales side, or if you, they said, if the town were to purchase them, that, you know, there may be a savings of tax dollars. What, what John put in here is at the end of the term of the contract, all totes supplied by the contractor to the customer that were not paid for by the customer, become the property of town for ten and one dollars. So at the end, they're ours, you know, and, um, if we're gonna rebit the contract...
Right.
We've already purchased the containers.
And we, we had a good lengthy discussion too regarding those schools, and there could be a potential savings of a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and basically educating the schools, actually doing away with dumpsters and going to these totes. Um, you remember what they were?
Where there's more food waste.
Right, they need to separate.
Versus garbage.
And paper and...
From all this stuff, but, but that's something that...
They would handle.
We, we can't put that in this contract.
No, no, but they were...
No, they would handle that with the schools.
They're willing to handle that, right? Which could be, you know...
Potential savings.
Potential savings as well. The other thing I'm concerned with is, how does a town realize these savings?
I thought you said your question, is it, is it eight hundred and four thousand, credit case on a estimated amount of tonnage? If we go under, we get savings?
That's what, that's where I, I'm asking those questions, where, you know, who gets the savings?
For controversy, we'd be for millions of tons if they charges more, they get a tax amount.
Right, right. And that's where we, we need to figure out.
Yeah, we should have, we would need to have a conversation with them, if the schools willing to do it.
Well, I think it's in here, the fifteen every month, they have to give the weight reports.
No, we're going to sign a contract now.
Now, section four says.
The benefit, the benefit to them, Anthony, is to reduce the tonnage going to.
Right, so they're the ones that realize, they get it.
And, and theirs is.
Their month, they're giving by the volume.
To go recycling, so if they're paying the tipping. Hard and heavy on their education program benefits them.
So I'm sure it would reflect in those.
There's no benefit to the town, from my understanding, John's refuse is the ones that would benefit if they did more recycling and less garbage.
Why can't we work a deal off?
The way it is now.
The way it is now.
Well, we share the savings at least, if not take it all.
But there's no cost to the town.
Yeah, but paying eight hundred and four thousand.
And we're tying up five years is a long contract, and trash is changing, that's what I'm concerned with as well. I think it's going to change where they're going to start, you know, being able to make money off the trash.
Well, they are. If they recycle more, they make money.
Right.
Exactly. We should share in that, and that should be in the contract.
Right, that's where I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know how you do that. Got it, it's got to be, it's got to be backed on a base amount, anything below the base amount, we have to share in that savings, and anything above that amount, then it's on, on their risk, I would imagine, but it's got to be some incentive.
Could you put that in, in the contract, John, is that language?
I, I can put it in, but I'm, but I, I'm going to have to have the formula that essentially Anthony's.
What's the tonnage they based eight hundred and four thousand on? We had that number somewhere.
Fifty-five hundred tons, I believe, was the number we mentioned last month.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Right.
We're at, we're at it on the spreadsheets.
I think that's what he said, fifty-five hundred.
Right.
I don't think we have.
The way it's structured, it's their response, I mean, the way I understand it, if the price goes up, it's their problem.
So if we do all the work and save money, they get all the profits.
Well, I mean, I think a lot of it's supposed to, the way I understand it, it's on them to try to help the process along.
Right, well, they'll put more money in their pocket, of course, they're going to help the process.
That's certainly their, I mean, that's their incentive.
Right.
On the whole contract, it's bid, so that they got to get rid of it no matter what, and how, you know, how do they get rid of it? But I think that was sort of the content of that.
See, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, well, John would know this, or he might know this. I don't think that you can say, well, we're going to share if you save, but if it goes up, it's on you. I, you know, most penalties or benefits that I've been involved in.
Got to go both ways.
It goes both ways.
Yeah.
So, you know, possibly, you got to look at it like, well, this is a five-year transition, going automated and, and, you know, teaching the recyclables, teaching recycling, and then at the end of either three years or five years, or whatever the length is, you would know, you know, how many, how many tons are going to recycling and how many tons are going the other way, so that, so the next time you bid it, you might have a benefit of it. But I, I don't know how, I don't know how, how you would ever write anything that says, okay, um, you know, heads we win, tails you lose, you know? I just don't know how, I don't know how we do it.
Cost of the money.
It's going to cost them a lot of money for the education.
And the trucks.
And the other, the other thing, too, is, is their incentive to recycle, they can turn around and not recycle, and we're paying, I mean, we were stuck in a twenty-year bid before, we're only talking five now for.
Right, for the, for the tonnage.
So we got messed up for twenty years. This is five years, and it's going to give them an incentive, and in the town, now, if the town doesn't recycle, we're still paying our base fee.
See, that's the thing, it is going to be a learning curve for everybody in town. It's, the town of North Bramford is going to have to recycle.
They could start off, they have, what, three, what is it, three routes?
Fran?
Or is it five?
Well, they're five, one every day.
One every day.
So if we start out slow with like one or two converting, that may work.
I believe they want to do is by January first, it's fully automated.
And educated, hopefully. Yeah, they were.
When I spoke with Dennis, some of the streets are very small, so they need to incorporate it into a different day, so there's a possibility that they could be down to four days out of the week that they would be picking up, because the streets they couldn't, because it goes so much quicker. And a couple of things that I noticed in the contract, and I'm not sure how this would work, is it said in there that the resident can use any tote that they want, and John's would have to pick it up. So the question is, are we going to be fully automated to allow residents to pick up, to go buy a trash can from home, or is not, if they aren't?
Well, no, they'll still have a person to lift it up manually as well, but I think what they meant was the size of the towers for, say, elderly, the smaller ones, and then they go up from there.
So they already decided that everyone's going to get a ninety? Is that, came out of that meeting?
Well, I think out of that meeting, they.
How they're picked up now, they know who, who they go to the garage.
But I think they were going to, in the informational part, at the educational part, they were going to, like, talk to people and maybe go with sixty-five instead of the ninety-five or whatever the size is worth.
I thought the recycling was ninety-six, and the sixty-five was.
Well, they're going equal. They're going equal now, because we are an untrained town. Because the whole New Haven County is on trend now.
The RFP says that they are supposed to send out a postcard to every resident asking what size container they want.
That they want.
The concern was, you have an elderly person that only needs, can only push a thirty-five gallon one, but they don't need a ninety-five gallon one. So that was the point of the card going out, which was.
Well, that's what I thought. I remember reading that. So if they go and get all ninety-five, what choice do you have? You don't have a choice.
You're using that ninety-five.
Yeah, so.
But they could pick it up at their garage if they have to, because they have residents where they go to the garage. No, I'm serious, the elderly people, they can't pull it out to the street.
It's right in the contract, it says.
Right.
People with, they have services, you know, are already receiving services.
Well, the other thing I remember him saying at the last meeting is, is that they want your recycling to be bigger than your trash.
Right, right.
So is that what they're doing, ordering two different, the recycling is going to be a different?
Originally, that's what they were saying, not now.
Oh.
Till January.
Well, no, if they have to order the totes, they have to order them now, so they can't change in January, because it's a twelve-week lead time.
When we, when we, when we talked through it.
Yeah.
It was wishful thinking to say that everybody was going to have more recyclables than trash.
Okay.
In the beginning. So out of that meeting, we came up with, just do equal size.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's their goal ultimately, in, in, in the trash business, you know, that, that was sort of what they were saying.
And what, and the reason was, because this is what was going to happen. If you have the two, you, two totes, and your trash one's full and your recyclable isn't, guess what, you're putting trash in that and taking it out to the road. So they said, you know what, we'll go with equal size.
Okay.
For now.
And if it doesn't fit in the tow, or you can still just put it out to the curb and they'll take it?
And that's where I, see, that's where I think, see, see, the way I understood it is, you're going to, you know, if you don't have recyclables or you don't have trash, you don't have to put it out there. But if you're going to put trash out, you have to put it out in the tote that the town gave you. If you have extra trash, and that's what they said, you can put it in a trash bag or whatever, and the guy, the driver, has the ability to get out of the truck and pick that up.
Open the door and pick it up.
But I think if you, if you, you, you have to use, in other words, your tote needs to be full before you go to a different size, and if you do that a lot, then they may send you a postcard that says, you need to come buy another tote. But, you know, if it's just like after the holidays or something, and you have a bunch of trash, as long as your tote's full, you know, they're going to pick up whatever's there, or a different type of trash can or something. That was the way I understood it, I don't know what it says in the.
And then, what did we talk about with the bulk, you know, like now, you still have people putting, you know.
It would be all be the same.
By the curb, that would still go weekly?
And then the metal is twice a year?
Yeah. The only thing changing is towers.
Yeah, they go into the garage.
Yeah.
Certainly, it's not a lot, a lot of trash, there are people only reduce trash, you know, a lot.
Yeah, kind of the street.
Any animals, you can't get them.
The big, the big changes of the total automated collection and the fact that it's their problem, you know, they have to get rid of it. We're going to designate a location, uh, A, B, C, R, A, now it's, you know, they, they can find different locations, they.
And, and they're paying the tipping fees, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is all in one deal, we just.
This is collection and disposal.
Is what we do.
Now, Michelle, is there a savings on, you know, they kept talking like, there should be a savings to the town on the insurance, because now we don't have to insure the trash or that. You know how we actually owns the trash, apparently, right now?
From when they pick it up?
From when they pick it up until it's delivered somewhere. And now, you know, they're, they're responsible, once they pick it up, it's theirs, but.
The RFP has not only the general conditions, John, that is attached to our bids and everything, but in the RFP, there's also contractors' pollution coverage, hazardous waste transporter coverage, and pollution, pollution legal liability that only be added to that contract. I think Frank only put in.
No, it's attached to, you got three attachments.
Okay.
The three attachments are the contract, the RFP, and the bidding document, and all three of those documents make up the contract.
Okay.
So everything, every word that's in your RFP is in this contract.
So, getting back to my question, do we need to, as of, you know, July one, contact our insurance carrier and say, hey, we need a reduction, because now our carrier is carrying the pollution and hazardous waste and everything on the trash, that we must have been covered, we, we had to be covering it before?
How is they not know?
I'm saying we need to ask our insurance.
Yeah, we'll look into it, because I know they were talking about the special insurance for.
Right, so, because if they need the special insurance, we must have it now.
Right.
Yeah, we'll have to ask that.
Well, we already sent, we sent this out, so what do we need to do tonight?
Yeah, but this isn't final, this kind, this is given to us to look at.
Right, this isn't final, and we gave a notice of award already, so.
Right, so.
Nothing, no.
We just got it at our desk, how can you read it and vote on it, if we have to?
I don't, yeah, I don't think we have to.
Well, I mean, there are some changes, there definitely, you know, there's still some changes that have to be addressed, um, based on comments, um, we provide some, John, if you can look that up.
John, I have a question for you. In the past, under the current program, Lauren, we pay extra for removal of tires, mattresses, and so forth, bulk. And I understand that we take all now, so I want to see any additional bills?
Well, that's, that's actually one of your comments here. Does the language include extra charge for tires, mattresses, et cetera? That was not, that was not raised by, in the discussion, the last town council person, if it's not, town council meeting, if it's not addressed in either the RFP or the bidding documents, how did you do, how was it addressed before?
We pay extra for disposals tires.
They may assume that's the case. If, if that's not what the case is, then, then we should state that it isn't the case.
But did they say, I mean, wasn't it, they have to pay all fees for disposals?
Yes.
I mean, that's all I was.
Right, they're paying all fees.
It's all on them now.
Yeah, yeah, that's how I read it.
That's the way I take it.
And they have a history of how many tires, you don't have a disposal fee on the metal, and that's a benefit.
Right, that's a benefit.
But again, it goes back to the same thing, Mike, is the, the town normally gets refund on the recyclables, so now it's.
Right, which we're not going to get.
I could see a discussion on tires and mattresses, but.
Actually, mattresses are in the definition of pulpy waste, so they're all set.
You have the Roehaus company.
Then all they have is tires.
Yeah.
But they usually don't pick up tires.
We, the residents, the residents pay up to public courts when we have our collection gates, we charge the residents, and then we, the town, pay for disposal of the dumpster of tires.
So we charge the residents at the town facility for tires?
Yes.
So you're charging the people in your, so that kind of offsets, that kind of offsets the disposal?
Well, it, it does say in here, unacceptable waste is tires.
Well, that, at, at curb side.
That, that puts it back on, on the town, the onus on the town for tires.
I mean, if you go get new tires on your car, you're paying, or at least every time I go, is about a ten-dollar fee per tire to get rid of it. So everybody should be aware that there's a fee for getting rid of a tire. Um, you know, and one thing we don't want to be is a free place to get rid of tires.
If you have a bunch of, they're going to, Frank, you're going to pay for it.
Yeah, anything else about your side, I'd go, you know, they're paying for it.
Right.
So that's my question, is this all on them or not?
No, you said tires were, uh.
It says on the top, they're.
Well, they usually put a red, I think they put a red sticker on it, and they don't pick it up, and then it's up to the resident to deal with it.
So they're clearly stopped now.
Covers, what we have to.
Covers the fee, right.
So if they're, if we're charging them, we have to make sure we're charging the right amount of money.
Right. You okay with that, Ace? Red sticker?
Red sticker.
All right.
Did that figure them, say the same thing?
Nine D appropriation transfer.
Yeah.
We're feeding this one to them.
Let's go. Nine D appropriation transfer.
Second. Mike opened it, didn't he?
He did.
He did, man, I second.
To approve the appropriations transfer section.
Moved by Council Dooty, seconded by Council Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni? Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Dooty?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Okay, item E, financial report, May thirty-first, two thousand and twelve.
The financial report for May thirty-first remained strong, as you see, in the total revenues, ninety-nine point one percent this year, compared to ninety-eight point one percent for the prior year. On the expense side, eighty-six point four percent currently, compared to eighty-eight point zero last year, so on both fronts, we're ahead of last year. I did advise the finance committee, there were a couple items that have, give me pause, and one is the employee leave number that we've kicked around for the majority of the year. As you know, a couple of recent employees have left, and that also brings to light in the police department, the overtime account, one of the employees that left was a police officer, as well as there's one on a family medical leave act. So the overtime at the police department is extraordinarily high. So we're hoping that the bottom line of the budget will support not only the overage on the employee leave buyouts, but also the police department overtime, as well as the lingering town attorney department overage.
Thanks, Anthony. Any questions? Moving right on. Approval of tax refunds.
I'll move that.
Moved by Counsel Dooty, seconded by Counsel Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Dooty?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
Item G, wall fields, why check projects? Item I, construction bid results.
Okay, included in your packet table tonight was results for the bids that were opened last Friday. We had seven bids submitted. Basically, there's two parts to the bid, the base bid, which is essentially the whole field, lighting, light, fencing, and everything associated, driveway, wiring, and everything associated with the field, except for the, the light poles and wiring, everything above the bases. The reason that was broken out is because we only had so much money initially under the STEAP grant and the ECP grant. We had, we had about eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars we were working with at that point, and we had a big concern about how much we could do with the available funds. We've reached, we recently received, uh, those that we have received an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollar STEAP grant, bringing the available funds up to about one point one million, and change, which would cover, uh, basically all this work. A couple other items that we didn't include in here, we had to bid separately, we thought we, you know, we could do a better, uh, savings on them, and those items are basically concession stand, restrooms, and associated septic system. Um, basically, with that one point one million dollars, we have enough to do, uh, the remainder of the items, including the base bid and the alternate bid, so complete everything that we have bid out there. This is around nine hundred thousand dollars for low, the apparent low bidder, to do the work. Again, positioned upon you liking that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar STEAP grant that we have. That's an unusual one, and we have to catch up on the paperwork. We don't have the agreement in place, we have a, an award letter, um, which we'll have to get, we have to follow up with the application, we come back and get the town council to approve everything, and go back and forth with the ECP for the grant. It's a reimbursable grant, so we have to spend the money and add, uh, we have to refund for it. Um, so basically, my understanding, I've checked with Anthony, and I think John, too, because I'm quite sure about the funding part of it, that, I mean, that's all the place, with the caveat that we have to catch up on the paperwork from the state. Not much money in the end, or agreement in the end, or anything.
I believe that we already approved to go forward to get them out.
Yes, and I have an application, um, that, that Richard has started, and I'm just trying to wrap it up and get it, uh, to the state.
Okay.
Again, the award letter that we got from the state was a notice of even awarding the grant, which we have to catching up on the paperwork.
Right.
And based upon that, we'd like to go ahead and award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. Our consultant for the project, Nafis and Young, will just do a double check in terms of qualifications. The bid tally is pretty straightforward, there's only two items, and we don't have to worry about a map error or anything like that. Again, I don't think that's gonna come back with any issue. We have worked with this contract before, and it's kind of a tight project. But basically, I have a motion for that included in the packet. And then also, we let the Nafis be on there to do the design and inspection services for the project. What they were authorized to go ahead and do the design, do the contract admin. We didn't know what was gonna be involved in the inspection services, how much time we were looking for, or how much money we would have at that point to proceed with that. I've looked at it with Fran and, basically, what we would be looking to have is basically part-time inspection, on the average, a half-time inspection, some days maybe not, some days maybe all day, at their quarter rate, which was about sixty-six dollars per hour, which is a pretty good rate. It'd be better than all the other rates we saw from any other firm committing on the project. But basically, we're looking at a budget of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for inspection services. Again, part-time, but it's, it's a ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty day project window that we're looking to cover. That number is included, it's all within budget. After that, it would be, with the one point one million dollars, we still have those funds. That was included in there as well. And the other thing, I have talked to Nafis and Young, and what they've agreed to do is provide their, not a design engineer, as a P E, as be their principal resident inspection. That's who Fran and I have been primarily working with through the construction phase. So, the person is something that we've asked for, and they've said for the most part, that's who we'll be getting during the project completion.
So this will basically be a fall seeding, then?
Yeah, that's, the whole window, get this thing going as soon as possible. Includes sod in the end, so we get the sod down in the fall by the end of September. And hopefully, you know, go playful.
Which would be good.
Ties into the Wall Field Route Eighty project, with the impact of Route Eighty on, on Wall Field, is what we're anticipating. Again, two suggested motions regarding both those items.
I'd like to move the first motion, that the acting town manager is hereby authorized to award the contract for the Wall Field at spite of the, to the lowest responsible bidder, conditions that are offered within the budget. Second.
Moved by Council Wentworth, seconded by Council Angeloni. Any discussion?
I'll move the next motion.
We gotta vote on this one first.
Yeah.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Dooty?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
I'll second Andy's motion.
So that, the second motion is moved?
Moved by Council Esposito, seconded by Council Dooty. Any discussion in the second motion?
Yeah, I got discussion. So even with our great budgeting for this, you know that we always will be short of money, and that, that number looks, looks high to me. I do a lot of work where engineers have to come out and inspect our work, and they never stand there and watch you. So I don't see how we would be having a engineer out there for a half a day. They may have to come out in the morning, and they may have to come out in the afternoon. But I just don't see that we would have somebody there, you know, watching the project there. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. That's, that seems like, you know, twenty-two thousand is a lot of money for somebody, especially where we have a good contractor on this job that certainly can read plans. So I didn't know if you wanna explain some of the things that are gonna be inspected, or, you know, maybe I'm all wet on this.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's electrical work, you know.
Irrigation.
There's all the grays, irrigation, and again, it was put in as a, it's a budget, you know, it depends on hours worked and authorized. I put in this a not-to-exceed number.
It says we're up to twenty-two fives.
Well, hopefully, it's a not-to-exceed number, that doesn't mean it's their, their number.
Well, if you take.
So it's about three hundred and twenty-five hours, Shane, that's gonna be spent on that job.
I mean, I rounded it to seventy dollars an hour, and it's three hundred and twenty-one hours, so forty hours a week, that's eight hours.
And buddy, that's, that's a cheap rate per hour.
Yeah, the rates are favorable.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
But, but it was put in, you know, for a not-to-exceed number, and that was the basis why you used to come up with it. It's basically as authorized. Certainly, if nothing's going on, we don't want anyone just standing there. That was, that's the whole concept. We have public works right, right there next door. If there's nothing going on, we don't need a person there all the time. Absolutely, and that's been the understanding all the way through. If someone's just grading, there's not much, you need to check it at the end, but you don't have to sit there and watch, watch people do something. So that was the thought process, which you, what that, you know, the number entails.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Dooty?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
H, Finance Subcommittee Draft Agenda, July eleventh, two thousand twelve meeting.
Looks good.
Do we have to accept that or not?
Do you wanna add anything, or is your, is your good point? Accept it means.
Yep, any motion?
Make a motion to accept it as presented.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Council Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Dooty?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
Item I, Suggested Motion for Memory and of Understanding the American Red Cross.
I'll move that.
What is this about?
Yeah.
Chief Seward asked, if we put on, he's available here, maybe he can just do it. Could you go over you or?
I read it, go ahead.
Mayor, excuse me?
Just to give you a quick overview of the item that you have in front of you, that was provided to the previous town manager with the intention of providing it to the town attorney in your self-authorization. On the twenty-second of May, it was meeting at the American Red Cross in New Haven with Sue Parker. She is the regional director for the American Red Cross and works with shelter operations. As a result of the storms that took place last year and the effects of the governor's impetus, the American Red Cross, similar to the utility companies, have gone one step further and are looking to put into place in each region, each of the five regions in Connecticut, regional shelters. This is part of that plan. The American Red Cross located at seven oh three Whitney Avenue has approached three communities in Region Two. We are a member of Region Two and encompasses thirty cities and towns. If you look at the Region Two map, North Ramford sits directly in the middle. They've approached not only us, but Killingworth and the city of New Haven to be regional shelters. The regional shelter concept is that the American Red Cross, which is made entirely of volunteers, would manage your shelter. They would staff your shelter, not neglecting any personnel that you can provide. They would assist in communications and provide health services within those three shelters. There's a couple different types of activations, and that is a regional event and a local event. A local event could be a fire that involves more than twenty people, families, and this is accessible twenty-four hours a day. With, with the potential for hurricanes, there's a lot of pre-planning that goes along. So, for example, if one of these three, or all three of the regional shelters were to be operational, all the food, bedding, accessories that were needed to open the shelter would already be in place. It is my recommendation as emergency management director for the town that we become a partner with the American Red, American Red Cross. It would ease some of our burden, and it would also provide a higher level of shelter operations than what we could provide locally. This, the document that you have in front of you, I was told today, is a national boilerplate that the American Red Cross uses.
Bill's the deputy emergency management director.
I'm sorry?
Who's the deputy, I know you're the emergency manager.
Hi. Anthony Esposito. And that's under, can I get Title Twenty, General Statutes?
Intermediate schools are a shelter, right?
The intermediate school is a shelter. Again, it was built with the generator for that purpose.
And we had volunteers, Lisa.
The, the next step in the process is that the Red Cross representatives will come out, survey the property, look at the capabilities, and follow their national processes.
Chief, you said, you said it's for a fire emergency? What if it's during a school day, or will it just be?
If it's during normal operations, then we'd have to look at another location. And that's happened in other places. Hi, and right here, no, Financial Committee from the town.
Just on page six, there's a term, termination, item nine. And there's a second date, requirement that we fill in on an expiration date.
Right, that would be filled in, takes a party agreement.
Is this yearly, or is this a yearly agreement?
The last, oh, the last agreement that I have on record was two thousand six.
You can't go for more than five years, so.
Oh, so we already had an agreement with them?
Uh, there is some more.
Yeah, two thousand six.
Sounds good.
Thank you, chief.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize acting town manager Kurt Weiss to sign all documents pertaining to the memorandum of understanding between the Connecticut and Rhode Island region of the American Red Cross and the town of North Ramford.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Dooty?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll throw that out there. I wanna go back to the Wall Field Switek property for, for a couple minute. Go to two, G two, Inspection Services. And I'll throw this out there to you and to Franny. Do we need, do we need, do you, where are you guys on this idea? That either Franny or yourself would be signing a, you know, timesheet or something for the time that the inspector's on site? Or, or what do you think?
Well, we're gonna have to sign, I mean, we're gonna be invoiced, and we're gonna have to monitor it and make sure, I mean, from that point.
I mean, I know that Franny's not gonna be there all, all the time, and neither are you.
Right.
So, that's the only downside to my idea.
But how do we keep track of the hours, I guess?
Now, some of these things, like, like, like the electrical, and I'm glad that Tom's still in the room. The electrical, you know, all the conduit and stuff is gonna be inspected by the building official, not the engineer. So that stuff's gonna be done by that. So, so they're gonna inspect like the under drains, and, but even so, it's gonna be more like a, for those under drains, it's gonna be like a septic inspection. The contractor's gonna put them in, they're gonna come out and shoot grades on them, and.
Or he's gonna start, watch them when they get started, that they're doing it right.
Right, make sure they're doing it right.
True, I mean, the way the numbers come up was, you know, I was trying to generate a budget.
And you were trying to go the whole ninety days.
Because there's always, if something goes wrong, then what do you do? I mean, the intent is, you know, maybe look at an hour in the morning, an hour at the end of the day, or if something's going on. But, I mean, the advantage is they're local, so it's not like you're.
Yeah, no, they're right, they're right there.
They're right there to go, that's been a discussion I've had with.
And you are getting a, the inspector is, is a P E?
Yeah. We gotta work with, yes.
Who, who, who you been working with up there?
John.
Don Harriman. And then, and the other thing was, if there's something rudimentary, and he's not available, someone else, I'm okay with it. It's the big thing. He knows the details of the project, and that's what we ask for. And that was, that was the commitment that we received. And again, it was a budgetary number, it wasn't a, that's what you're getting.
Was that number generated by you or by them?
I generated that.
Oh, okay.
You know, I try to come up with, you know, halftime, I had, try to have a basis for it. And again, we gotta, again, we didn't know who the contractor, we have a pretty good contractor, from what I've seen, you know. That makes like a whole lot easier in terms of monitoring that. If you get, you know, we could have had a bad contract, and I'd require a lot for him.
Is it, are they awarded it?
Hey, Kurt? I had a question.
I didn't think they'd.
Well, they haven't.
They haven't, but it's gonna probably.
Are we doing what?
Oh, okay.
Budget includes.
I want the three fifty, what, how did?
Yeah, budget of the.
Budget includes life, the whole.
Right.
Does that mean we can go up the bid then for the concession stand and all that stuff now?
Is that, is that the alternate?
I mean, that's, that's the intent.
So the alternate bid proposal was for the concession stand bathroom?
No, no, the, the base bid was everything but the, basically, the uppers and the lights and some of the wiring associated with it. This gets the light, you know, we were going into this, without that other three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we were trying to break things apart. This gets the whole project done, other than the concession stand, restrooms, and the associated septic system, which we would be doing separately. We'll put those out separately.
Franny can do the septic, he's, he's really good at it.
That was my question, we can go up the bid now?
Well, now, we have to start, we have to start preparing for that part of it.
So that'll be under the three hundred and fifty thousand, with the second STEAP?
That'll be other part of that three hundred and fifty. There's about two hundred thousand, more or less, that can be available.
We just wanna be sure, you know, we're gonna go after the three fifty without.
We, we have to sort of wrap up the mechanisms and the detail, we might have to come back to you. But we certainly will keep you.
So what, lights are the first STEAP?
This does everything other than the concession stand, restrooms, and septic system.
Right.
In the first phase.
Right, okay.
Contractor did a wall field in Killingworth, that was, you remember, two hundred and fifty dollars. Huge, huge field.
But this same contractor, when they did Seahill Road, the grass was growing as they went up the hill. I mean, they were very impressive. So hopefully, they still are. All right.
All right, item ten, citizen statement and petition.
Meeting Daniel Arman of Chinsy Drive. I was wondering if there's an avenue available to citizens to offer their email address, or telephone number, or other contact information to the town in lieu of, or in conjunction with traditional mail when it comes to correspondence for the town. My personal experience is that the town has sent out letters to me, correspondence via the traditional letters. I never got them. They were sent back to the town undeliverable. And again, I live on Chinsy Drive, and I'm here ten times a month because I love you guys. So it's kind of frustrating for me. So I was wondering if we could look at that for potential? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question for Dan. Did you get your tax bill?
No.
Oh, good, well, watch out for the sheriff.
Fully aware of that.
I wanna talk, well, while you were still on the Wall Field issue, and possibly not monitoring it or monitoring it, a fresh word in my mind is still the NBIS. It might have been under inspected, under watched, and now we're overburdened with issues over there. So, if you save a buck here, you're gonna spend twelve here. So again, another town project coming up that really should be monitored closely, properly, progress reports. I don't know what it's gonna take to get finally a job to go right in this town. But, I mean, that NBIS.
Good contractor.
Well, that too, yeah, but I mean, yeah, look at the issues you still have over there.
Again. Again, save a buck, you're going to have to spend...
Your argument doesn't hold water, because we had so much inspection on that school that it wasn't funny. We didn't have anybody from town watching that.
Okay, well, I just touched on my concern is...
Can we appoint you?
No, I'm too busy. I've got four grandkids, keep me busy. I mean, it's just the history.
Right.
So, we're starting fresh on a new project. It's time to really start fresh all over.
Believe me, when I retire, I volunteer to inspect everything.
Okay, well, you've already got a good job.
And I assure you, they'll go smoothly.
You said you're on the roof of the high school, so we know you're around.
That's well-known.
Okay. The second question, John alluded to with the town manager, and again, the Charter Revision Commission put in, and out, for lack of a better word, whether or not the town manager would have to live in town. But I think you hit on a little, John. What's wrong with having a hard, fast number in there? Because you seem to have gotten into a he said, she said, they said, we said last time with the last town manager, because of the way the first charter is written, and it sounds like there's going to be a lot of if's in the second one. What's wrong with having a hard, fast number in there? And then, you also can out of that with your vote. And you, yourself, mayor, told me at the Charter Revision Public Hearing a couple weeks ago, that six vote was elusive. Why would you want to get back stuck with that six vote again? You guys had so much trouble getting that six vote. Stay with five, stay alive. I mean, because you just, you couldn't get that, you couldn't buy it. So, again, why get into that mess again? You know what I'm saying? Because I heard it came this way to me at the public hearing, so again, you've got a way of getting out of it if you don't need the option. But if you want to use it, have a deadline that's known upfront in the job interview, it's a hard, fast number. It's not, well, we think we can do this, or we want to do this. It's a hard, fast number that can be removed on a moment's notice. And again, it'll be black and white, and it won't be gray. Now, let's talk trash, and not in the same sentence as the town manager. If you go by my house, every trash day, you'll see a nice Home Depot, heavy-duty, black-bagged, taped. It's the only thing that works at the top of my driveway. Now, if I put any kind of garbage can up there, when they pick it up, you know, when it's heavy with the trash in, it's fine. If I don't get up there quickly, the backdraft from tractor-trailers that come out of Severance and Uline, and all the, you know, tractor-trailers down the hill from my house, the backdraft and then send it flying all over.
So, I guess you're one of those houses that can get door-to-door service?
They'll come to your garage.
They'll come to your garage.
Good, well, then get down and up my driveway. Yeah. And another thing I wanted to know is, can we get a waiver to stay with that system? I mean, I've lived there 30, 40 years.
They'll come to your, they'll come to your garage.
Good.
Same as you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I just, trash cans don't work for me.
Well, then, I guess they'll have to come to your garage.
These are heavy, Cliff. They are, they are heavier, Cliff. These are heavy trash cans.
Yeah, they are.
They're not going to blow away.
Okay, well, that's my second...
And they're saying they'll still pick up your bag if it's still there anyway, right?
Oh, yeah.
If you don't have a tote, and you have a bag, they'll pick it up.
All right, now, can I get the one with a reset, so I can pull it up the hill in my car? Do we have an adapter we can, because, I mean, I have a hill, and I have, and it's not the last try, it's just the way my land is set up, and plowing.
Door-to-door.
You're going to be much healthier when you get done all that.
Well, you know, you'll see me down in the back field, because the trash, the tote will take me, and, you know, send me back. I mean, it's...
No, those are legitimate, yeah.
Because living on the state highway, and the state highway people do a good job plowing, but they can't slow down, that's another thing. When I get, the snowplow, it just sends it flying, so, I mean, it's a fix I had to come up with. It's an expense for me, those bags aren't cheap. But again, I don't want my trash to end up everybody else's yard.
It's okay, it's barcoded, so they can track it down.
Yeah, I'll print up some illegal barcodes and put them on the bag. Again, I mean, I just, these are some thoughts I had, and, again, you know, you guys are doing a good job, you've had a rough year so far, and Anthony and everybody, I mean, I appreciate all the time you're putting in. You're starting for a fresh start with a new town manager, you're starting with a fresh start with this new project, and, again, I'd hate to see either one go this way or that way without some good hard tactics. And like I say, I just think a number for a town manager, then it's, then it's not an issue. It's theirs, two digits, whatever, you know, and everybody knows it upfront. So, if you have that many candidates that are beating on your door, you've got one sniffing already, then I don't think it's that much of an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to move the executive session.
Yeah, we're not done.
I'm sorry.
I have a statement.
Oh, okay.
So, I was, this afternoon, I was fortunate enough to be home on the farm baling hay, and when I, you know, so you go around and around the lot, and on one corner of this lot, I had a view of our pond, and when I came around on that corner with the view of our pond, I actually saw a bald eagle dive into the pond after a fish, and he missed it.
Oh, my goodness.
But I did see that, and I think that's pretty awesome, that we have bald eagles watching over the town. I've heard my whole life, they were up at the lake. I've never seen one over the barn before, so I thought that was, you know, noteworthy.
It's called a blind eagle. There's a bald eagle and a little blind eagle.
He probably needed a glass.
It's a bald eagle.
Find him a wig while you're at it. Are there any further statements? Now, you can move it.
Make a motion to move the executive session.
Including...
125.
Moved by Councilor Esposito, seconded by Councilor Wentworth.
That's a lot of inspection.
Roll call.
Mayor Kandelora.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.